Six o'clock. Well, oh, I've got some, I'll, I'll fill in the time. I would like to call this regular meeting to order. This is April 27th of 2020. Now, I have the pledge tonight, so my, one of my grandsons is a pastor. So he's been calling me to check how I feel and all that. And, and so we were talking about the prayers that we have to give. And so he gave me some things that, you know, that he thinks about. And we kind of designed this. It isn't, it isn't deep, okay? But I, I want to give him some credit. And if he could have designed it, you would have thought you were at church. But I couldn't do that. I sit in this. We have to be somewhat neutral. So if you will join me tonight in the prayer and the pledge allegiance, I'd be great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we come to you tonight knowing you are above the circumstances that we are living through. When things seem out of control, we can take comfort knowing that you are in control. Lord, we lift up all of our healthcare workers, our police, our fire, and those working on the front lines of this panic. We pray for the safety and the energy for each of them, for their families, and we pray for the healing of those who are sick. And we ask you to comfort the families, those who have lost loved ones. We know through all this, through all of this, you are good. We pray that each person who is able plays their part in helping to restore our economies, both local and nationwide. We pray for our business owners navigating these tough times and those who have been left without work. Lord, you are a provider, a provider of strength, a provider of finance. But most of all, you are a provider of hope in your name. Now, everyone is present, so we'll go, we have no communication items. But I'm, I know this isn't down, but I hope the lawyer will be okay with me. But I want to thank everybody that has sent me cards for the passing of my husband and the celebration of my birthday and the big parade that I have. I have to thank all of you, staff, council, neighbors, and everybody that gave me a 50-car parade by my house. And just so the public knows this, I kept saying, oh, oh, my goodness, the public, what are the tax dollars? But it was all checked out legally before we did this. So that's what my city manager tells me. So I just want to make sure the public knows. But I really, it was, I've never had anything like that. And how can you repeat something like that? It's just wonderful. Okay, so our city clerk now will give you some information on the participation tonight of the meeting.
Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the building is closed. However, our residents have several ways to address the council. They may submit their questions and comments to publiccomments@goodyearaz.gov. And then they can also view the meeting using Facebook, YouTube, or the link from our agendas using Granicus. The public may always contact the mayor and council at any time by sending an email to gycouncil@goodyearaz.gov.
All right, now's the time for those citizens who would like to address this in council. And so do you have any of those cards or any requests?
I do have a public comment.
Okay.
That was received using the public comment email. It's from Michael Queen, and he does not list if he is a resident. It says, "City governments in Arizona are using the coronavirus police state card to flush our right to attend city council meetings down the toilet." This is what the Arizona revised statutes say about city council meetings. It lists the www.azeleg.gov slash, it's got the whole ARS for 38-431.01. And then he goes on, 38-431.01, "Meetings shall be open to the public. All meetings of any public body shall be public meetings, and all persons so desiring shall be permitted to attend and listen to the deliberations and proceedings." A list of all the other rules and regulations in the ARS about the open meeting laws are at www.azeleg.gov/ARSDetail and then Title 38. While Arizona Attorney General Mark Bernovich has said holding city council meetings on the web doesn't violate the open meeting law, I disagree. Some people don't have access to the internet and thus can't attend the internet meeting. Same for when the meetings are, show on the local government's propaganda cable TV station. Not everybody subscribes to cable TV or even has a TV. And then he goes on to include a, an article from Joshua Bowling from the Arizona Republic regarding open meetings.
Is that the final word?
Yeah.
All right, I appreciate the comments. And I'm going to turn that over to the city manager and the lawyer to respond to them and some of those answers. Is that okay? All right. So the city clerk, please read consent agenda, agenda item, one by title only.
Number one, approval of minutes.
Does anyone in the council remiss, we used to remove that? I'm thinking not, that was the minutes. So can I have a motion, a second to approve item one? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard the motion from Councilman Kano and the second from Vice Mayor Stip. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzello?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell? Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, let's go on. There are two public hearings on the agenda. The first public hearing item is to consider rezoning to a final planned area development pad for the curve at Australia Commons. Principal Planner Steve Coretia will present. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I do have a PowerPoint presentation that I'll be providing here shortly.
We're having technical problems tonight, huh? For the public that's listening, we're having some technical problems with the screen. All right, there we are.
All right, Mayor, council members. Thank you. Do have the presentation available. This is a request for a final PAD. Development is Curve at Australia Commons. We are along, south of I-10, along Australia Parkway. This is the subject property right here. It's about 7.6 acres. Surrounding it, we have existing subdivision to the east, single family. To the south, we have an apartment complex going up. To the west, we have a future grocery store and restaurant, along with a lot of other existing commercial development that is on the west side of Australia Parkway. And to the north, we have an undeveloped property that's designated for commercial use. General plan, all of this area here is business and commerce, and that land use is for commercial-type entities, retails, and services. It also does allow residential development. And this is where we are today. Subject property right here. And this whole area right here, this is what is known as Australia Commons, a PAD approved back in 2006. And right now, it's designated as the district. So it has preliminary PAD zoning with the land use of the district. And again, that district land use intended for things like a commercial, shopping, retail services. It also did allow multifamily development. And what we have tonight is a request to take that 7.6 acres that's currently zoned preliminary PAD. The request is to zone it to final PAD, but to actually create its own separate PAD. And that PAD would be called Curve at Australia Commons. It would be based off of the city's R1C. It's a court home designation. And it is intended for single-family detached court homes, which at this time are proposed as rentals. And this is development plan that was included with the request for the final PAD. It's about 64 court homes. It's about eight to 10 dwelling units per acre. You have, you can see, you have a common court designation. You have kind of a main street looping through the development. And then you'll have the courts off that main street. Open space is about 12%. You have also several visitor parking areas throughout the development. Each of the homes will also have parking spaces for two cars for their own use, as well as some visitor spaces in the driveways. We also have the main point of access right here. The second point of access, emergency only, is right here. And the next few slides I'm going to go through, it's really just going to be a high overview of some of the exhibits that were in the PAD. The applicant during his presentation will get into a lot greater detail on those. Again, this is just, shows you a little greater detail how the development is proposed to be configured. But again, you can see the main road come wrap around through. Then you'll have several courts accessing off this main street. And this is a, again, greater detail of the court. You can see how there are several homes wrapping around the court. And this is the proposed architecture for the homes. You can see there's a mix of one and two-story homes within the development. Again, another streetscape view of the homes. These are the two stories. And it shows you how each will have its own garage for parking of the residential vehicles. Because it is a request for rezoning, we did adhere to our citizen review process. We did not have a formal neighborhood meeting, but we did send out notices to surrounding property owners within 500 feet. Staff did not receive any sort of public inquiry from that notice. Also, for the public hearings, we followed our proper notice protocol. That included, again, a notice mailed to owners of property within 500 feet, a legal advertisement placed in the paper, as well as a posting of the property. We also updated the city's current development webpage with news of this development, all the applications and invitations to the public hearings. To date, staff has not received any public inquiries on the notice that we have done. And so after reviewing this application, we do find it is consistent with the general plan. We do find it compatible with the surrounding area. Staff is recommending approval at their April 15th meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission did review this item. And they're also recommending approval of this item. Also, there was no opposition or public inquiry voiced on this project at the commission hearing. With that, we are recommending approval subject to the nine stipulations in the attached ordinance to the report. With that, Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. I know the applicant has a presentation that they would like to make to the council.
Does he make it now? Yeah, all right. He's welcome to make that presentation. And he's not going to come before, is that correct?
No, Mayor, I do have his presentation here. I will bring it up here shortly.
Oh, okay.
And the applicant has called in, so he will prompt me to go to the next slide. So we're going to kind of team up with this.
All right.
Thank you, Steve. I'll leave it to the mayor to introduce himself.
Okay, Jason, I do have your presentation up. The mayor and council are just awaiting for your presentation. If you could introduce yourself and talk nice and slowly, that would be great.
Wonderful. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Jason Sanks. I have a planner with SEG at 8280 East Skelton Drive in Scottsdale. And thank you for your time tonight and working through those time periods where we're having to do these presentations and a bit of an alternative for that. So I'm going to kind of fly a little blind here, but Steve's going to guide by proceeding with the PowerPoint presentation that I prepared, as intended to be more of a supplement to staff's presentation, which certainly is very technical, you know, in terms of what it presented to you. And then I thought I'd try to facilitate that by embellishing on some of our community attributes. So on Slide 1, and so, you know, Steve, I have those slides numbered in the bottom right-hand corner. This is just a streetscape image that we've had prepared based on the architecture of our homes and the site layout. This is a single-family home community. If you could proceed to Slide 2, Steve, that would be great. Just to recap, the project is located in the Australia Commons PAD area, although the technical aspect of the zoning case is this would become its own file PAD. You can see the site context near the Interstate 10. Fulton Homes Community, a single-family homes, less density than ours, of 3.9 units per acre, is under construction currently to the east. The district to the north is intended to be commercial mixed use. Could be an entertainment area. And all these grocery stores intended to be built immediately to our west. And the Afara Apartments, left center, 23-pointing units per acre is to the south. Next slide, please, Steve. On the next slide, on Slide 3, I'm going to show you the site context in better detail. We have 2020 areas available from the county. So I superimposed our site plan on top of the county area, which shows the Fulton Homes actually actively under construction. We're fortunate that we don't really have any direct neighbors we're impacting too much. The three-story apartments to our south are set back significantly from our property line. There's only one lot, if you look in the northeast corner of our development, there'll be one home from Fulton that will side to one or one and a half of our homes. But otherwise, we're kind of street to street on that side, so we won't have any immediate impact on those homes and those future homeowners there. To the north, Roosevelt Street is built out just here, so we'll be accessing Roosevelt Street as depicted on our site plan. If you notice this funny little looped street that goes to the Aldi grocery store, you may wonder why that's there. The Aldi development requested that, through the master developer, that they be granted this access point, so that when their trucks deliver their groceries and inventory, they can cycle in and out of the Aldi grocery store from Roosevelt at that access point that we'll both share. And that's because there will be a, there will be a safe place for them to have what we call full-motion access, so they can turn left and go back to the freeway from there. So that's the reason that that funny little looped street is there. As you know, to the west of Australia Parkway, there's a significant amount of commercials within the Walmart Center and in the freeway immediately to the north. Next slide, please, Steve. Resharing the development plan that you did see in staff's presentation, reiterating that we have 64 individual platted lots. These are platted, single-family homes. The interesting aspect, as Steve noted, is that it is a rental community. So the developer, the home builder, will retain ownership of the homes and rent them and professionally manage the community. But they are platted lots, so it's not a multifamily development, per se, where it's a single piece of property with a bunch of buildings on it. Rather, it'll be a 64-lot platted subdivision. Indeed, our preliminary plat is under review by staff now. It will be coming before the council, should we be successful with the zoning case, hopefully next month or in the near future. Our density is a little bit on the low side for a multifamily. It's just eight units per acre, but we believe that makes a good transition to the high-density apartments to the south and the low-density city apartments to the, oh, low-density city, single-family homes to the east. All of our homes have two-car garages, like a normal house. And all of the front yards will be installed with the master developer and also maintained by the master developer, similar to like an HOA would do. It does just be a property owners association here. And our design is based on the local street. But this is not where you pull into kind of an apartment complex or some of the new rental communities where they have smaller little cottage houses, where you pull in and there's drive aisles and carport parking and those sorts of things. Those sort of communities are just fine for that purpose. But for our sake, we're developing this as a neighborhood. And so this will be a looped local street with autocourt drives that access the looped local street. Next slide, please. We wanted to depict what our development would look like at its entry and also focus on what the Roosevelt streetscape would look like with our combination of one- and two-story homes and the varying types of roof lines. So the homes that you see on the left of this kind of wide landscape depiction show that there'll be one and two-story homes, both dotting the five homes that have access, or excuse me, have frontage along Roosevelt. So you'll see the roof lines bend. They're hipped and gabled, one and two stories. So you won't have a monotony of the same kind of building look along our short frontage along Roosevelt Street. Next slide, please, Steve, on Slide 6. So our focus on the arrival is that when you come into the community, as shown, you'll come in and you'll immediately see your open space, your park. There'll be an enhanced entry there with a landscape median or also decorative paving. And there's a park at the entry terminus. This provides for traffic calming. And you'll note that on both sides of the entry, we've allocated single-family, I'm sorry, uh, single-story homes in those locations, so you don't feel well then as you enter the development. Next slide, please, 7. This is our private street, focused on the street concept, where they'll have sidewalks and street trees. Homes that are fronting along this looped local street will have front porches. And in almost all cases, they do not have any garages that take direct access to the public street, or I mean, the private street that loops through the development. In one case, we have three homes that do front on the street and do have typical garages and driveways. There's no carports in the development. We have significant roofline diversity. And again, all of the individual lots will have professional landscape design and maintenance. And every one of the homes has its own private backyard. So it's a little bit different than other communities where we do have kind of more standard amenities like backyards and garages. Next slide, please, Slide 8, Steve. And our neighborhood design focus is on the park. We'll have a remada with shade trees, a double-sided fireplace with lounge-style seating, a dog park and comfort station, game lawn, outdoor barbecue and bar-style seating, and benches. Next slide, please. This is kind of a more detailed vision for those of you that may have a little difficulty in trying to capture what would this autocourt look and feel like. This is kind of a bird's eye perspective view. You can see where the drive entry takes access from the looped local street. And all of the garages are closer on the inside. We still maintain nicer garage doors, still have little front porches and such, so that this is kind of a cozy, safe area. But you won't have the garages dominating the streetscape, because all of the garages are clustered inside the autocourt. Again, you'll have private side and rear yards, tree-lined streets. And then there'll be additional parking for vehicles inside the autocourt, as well as the streets, the private street inside the development will be wide enough to accommodate guest parking and visitor parking. Next slide, please, Slide 10. So we had, just to continue with the visual emphasis and the focus on our housing architecture, we depicted what the homes look like when they take direct access to the street in the top graphic. So you'll have full-size driveways, individual street access. Again, porches facing the street, and there'll be tree-lined streets. The autocourt homes, as depicted in the module you saw on the prior slide, will have shared driveway access, off-street parking, landscaping, porches facing the court, and a bit of a private ambiance and those little coves. Next slide, please, Slide 11. This is a plan view of the modules. The module on the left shows, you can see more technically where the cars could park, where the garages are and the front door access points are to the homes. And the two homes that you see in the bottom left-hand corner of the slide, Plan, it says Plan 2, those are just the single-story units. And again, we're trying to keep single-story where we can of letting the local streets, so that we have a softer edge on that street, so it doesn't feel like a canyon effect of having all two-story homes. And we do have a handful of traditional lot homes, as shown on the right side. Slide 12, please, Steve. Oh, that's it, the end of my show. So again, Mayor, council, thank you again for the time. I did speak with Steve earlier and staff in regards to providing some additional details, possibly in regards to our selection of colors for the development. And I did want to assure the council that we have selected at least six different colors for the body color of the houses. It's not like a multifamily development where there might be just one or two colors for the buildings. In this case, it'll be six body colors and a variety of trim and accent colors as well. But I'd be happy to answer questions on the development or any details on the architecture, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Mayor, I think that concludes the staff and applicant presentations.
Thank you. Before I close the public hearing, do we have any customer?
No speaker cards.
From the people?
Yeah, no comments.
No, no comments? Okay, with that, no comments or questions, I'm going to close the public hearing. Will the city clerk read, please read Resolution Number 2020-2046 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2046 declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk titled Official Supplementary Zoning Map 19-09A, City of Goodyear AZ Rezone Case, Curve at Australia Commons Legal Description, and Curve at Australia Commons Planned Area Development.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second, to approve Resolution Number 2020-2046? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilmember Loretano and a second by Councilmember Pizzello. Open for council discussion. Councilmember Pizzello?
How many different elevations will this development have?
Thank you, Mayor and council. At this time, we have a total of perhaps seven plans. Those would include a basis of five distinct floor plans, three bedrooms. We may have a four-bedroom option. And two of those five plans will have a side entry garage version, so we can be flexible with housing placement. So effectively, from someone that would drive through the community, they would see seven plans.
Another question. Is this, is this rental or ownership?
That's a good question. Thank you, Mayor and council. The community is going to be built like a home builder would build, except that this home builder, this developer is going to retain ownership of all of the homes, manage the community and the landscaping, and rent them as a rental community. If in the future, times change and they would choose to sell the homes, they could effectively do so, since they'll be platted lots. They would just sell them as the master builder.
Ah, so what would the rents, you got a range for the rents to start with?
So it will be market-based rents. My understanding from that, at this point, I spoke with the developer just prior to this call about the rental rates. And you may be familiar with the available project that's nearby. Our target is to have our rental rates be somewhat less per square foot. But if you're looking for a solid round number, I would say they would just be competitive with homes of this size, although they're a bit unique. So I would consider it by a square foot basis in terms of the rent, and it'll be market-based. I wish I could provide you an exact number, but that won't be known for about eight months.
Yeah, my only concern, if it starts out all rent, and then since it's going to be one owner who's going to own all the homes, right? Is that if it decides then to start selling them off piecemeal, what does that do for that community? Because you're going to have a mixture at that time.
Certainly. My council member, the intent right now is, to be honest, in any range that I'm aware of, that the intent would not be to sell the homes. It's intended to be a rental community for some time. I'm not certain when they cross that bridge how they'll handle it. It probably wouldn't be much different than when we've seen, particularly in the housing room many years ago, that rental communities condominiumized and sold condos. In this case, they wouldn't have to condominiumize anything. They already have decent lots.
Yeah, like I say, my only concern would be that if the renters have no choice either buy or move out, then you're converting an entire rental place to, to homeownership. So I'm not sure how we would treat that from a staff or council perspective, if there's anything that we can do from that perspective. I throw that back to staff.
You want to comment on it, Steve?
Mayor, council members, just to say that we did review both aspects. We knew it was going to be rental, but could go ownership. From a general plan perspective, we did not have necessarily. From a general plan perspective, we did not have necessarily any kind of concern in that regard. But if the council wanted to discuss further, we can provide input if needed.
Yeah, my, my only concern if it does convert. Um, and then those that are renting don't have any choice either to move out or buy, because it's kind of hard just to sell a couple and keep a couple of them rental. You know, usually if it goes, it's gonna go all one way or the other on, under that. At least, that's the way I've seen it in the past, so. That's kind of my biggest concern is uh, uh, not so much the rental, but if it decides to turn around and down the road, sell them off, how's that gonna impact that area?
Councilman, as the, as the applicant here, I, I certainly know it's a concern, I'm sure that the developer, and I, I can only imagine how much this has been on his mind should I ever get to that point. I know it's not in the cards right now, but um, I will share that with them. And uh, that's about all the information I have unfortunately at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor, Steve?
You know, I think just to kind of follow up on that concept, if we were to take that uh, any apartment complex that we have that decided to go the other way and go into condos, um, much like the um, started out, it started out as apartments on the north side of Wigwam Boulevard, east of the high school in Litchfield Park. They started out as apartments and they flipped to condos.
You wanted the double store and ones, yes.
Yeah, so it went the other way.
Yeah.
Do we, is there, so it's happened, but it, that went the other way. Is there anything in our, in our zoning ordinances or anything that uh, that talks to that concept of, of it flipping from rental to owner or owner to rental? Um, I, I don't even know that it would be, because I think the zoning is a zoning.
Mayor and Council?
Oh. The expert just walked in the door.
Oh, he's like, I'm not talking.
And I don't know that it matters, Steve, so I'm not even sure that, that, that it's a thing. So I, I think when we look at zoning, we're really looking at the dwelling units per acre, the, the, the type of product that it is from a structural perspective, right?
Mayor and Council, that is correct. When we're looking, it is more development standards, amenity standards, open space. We don't really have, not that I'm aware of, any kind of zoning ordinance standard that talks about converting units from a multifamily to an ownership.
Or vice versa.
Correct.
Okay. Um, it, just long as I've got it, my only comment on, on, on this is I'm appreciative of the fact that at least there are seven different elevations, and it looks like there's different color, because what we've seen in the community so far for these mini communities is they um, uh, they look like old army barracks or...
Don't say it.
I'll leave it at that. So I'm glad that we've got a different variety, and we've seen something slightly different. Um, and I guess it's just a, a sign of the times of things changing from the standard single-family to these court homes. And we've got a couple of areas that are court-homed in the city that are very nice. So with different elevations, so I'm kind of taking this in the same, in the same light. And it is particularly appropriate at this point in time, especially in this location. It's budding up against commercial, it's budding up against multifamily, it's budding up against yet-to-be-developed or homes that are, that are now underway. If this was a year from now and half of those homes were sold and all of a sudden we popped this in, I think we'd be hearing from a lot of them. So I'm, I think I'm okay.
Councilman Laura Towne?
I, I do like, that was one of my concerns, was we've seen some of these come before us, and once they're built, they're not as unique as I would like to see them. I think this is a very good unique with the two-story and the one-story and the architectural elements that are in the stipulation, so that does make me happy. I like the fact they look like single-family houses, they don't look like um, bungalows like new, that are all the same. And I think that's an important area in our community that we don't have, because there are people that do want to rent single-family houses, and to rent it from a independent owner is oftentimes very, very expensive. Um, my only question is the yards, you said they each had separate yards, are they going to be landscaped before they move in, or is that the tenant's responsibility, and are they fenced?
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Mayor. The rear yards are going to, there may be a small landscape package that's put in. In fact, we're actually providing a larger patio area than what is shown. But you'll see, and um, do you have slide, do you mind having slide eleven stay up, uh, Steve? Not sure if they're still looking at the power panel, but the slide eleven kind of shows the way the backyards work, and they're labeled as private yards. So I, I, I don't believe that we're fully landscaping the rear yards right now. I think it'll be, it'll certainly be improved, it won't be dirt, or like be DG'd and expanded patio, and then people can go to barbecue and other things back there. All of the front yards and side yards will be professionally installed with landscaping.
But they, they will be fenced off and separated from each other?
That is correct. We, or if you look, uh, it's, I know it's a bunch of line work on these diagrams, but yes, they, we have a minimum dimension of ten foot of rear yards. So you'll have like, it'll be really like little courtyard spaces, do barbecues, and a little private space for your dog, et cetera. But they are all, they're all in fences.
Well, that works for me. I think that's a niche that we don't really have with this type of rental unit, so I support it.
Are you finished? All right, Wally?
Um, I have a couple of questions. I'd like to know...
Wally, can you put the microphone closer? I'm having trouble tonight hearing people.
I'd like to know if each unit has a two-car garage with a door that closes? Yes or no?
Thank you, uh, Councilman, yes. Each, uh, each home has an integrated, fully functional two-car garage with garage door and garage door with windows.
Okay, my next question is what is the square footage of each unit? What are, what size homes are we talking about here?
Oh, sure. Okay, so the, uh, thank you. The smallest of them is just twelve hundred fifty square feet, or three bedrooms to that, and they go up to fifteen eighty if you get the four-bedroom option home. So they are still relatively small, but they are twelve fifty to fifteen something.
Fifteen hundred for the largest one?
Yeah. We're, we're considering the four-bedroom option now. Right now, it's just three bedrooms, so we, we can make one a four-bedroom home. We're working on that right now. We have a, as you probably know, the staff would be tasked with doing a designer view application for the actual home plans themselves. Um, and we'll be ready for that in about three weeks, four weeks.
Okay, my, my real concern with this, the way it's laid out, is that there is no children's area. And the picture shows a woman and a child walking down the street. And you're gonna put sixty-four homes as rental properties, and I would suspect there'll be many families that will move in there, and there's no place for the children to, to play. But you do have, I, I noticed the Ramada area and um, you said a barbecue area. Uh, most subdivisions that I'm familiar with, they have turnkey um, play areas for children. And that's, I, I, I don't know if we require it with every subdivision, um, but if this is going to be behind Aldi's, and it's across the street from the QT, right? Or is the QT down a little bit? I'm asking you, Steve.
A little further down.
A little further down, okay. So if there are children here, and they're looking for a place to play, they're gonna go into the Fulton Homes area, because you know they're gonna have play areas. So I'm just thinking of, of an amenity for families with children, that they have an area. I mean, if, if we're, if they get locked down like we are now, at least they could walk to the park with their kids. So I, I don't know where they would put it, but I would like to see that. And I would like to see that it's a turnkey. It doesn't have to be huge, but I think it's a real important amenity for those families going in there.
Councilman Canel?
Well, I like it. I like the look, I like the density, I like the concept. I think it's a very unique pocket neighborhood, a great product. The one thing that's my concern is this driveway off of Aldi and the truck. So can you explain that a little bit more?
Certainly, Councilman, or Councilman, the uh, the driveway off of Aldi is, is a requirement based on this property prior to the Roosevelt requiring it. It was based between the, an agreement between the master developer and Aldi which preceded our development. Clearly, it's already been approved and we're just coming in. Um, so we accommodated that secondary access for Aldi to come across the north portion of our property, and then, and they're able to safely access their trucks at Roosevelt Street, where they can actually pull forward across Roosevelt, take a left, and then ultimately take a right at Estrella Parkway and go to the freeway. Other trucks would also come in that way. We don't anticipate a significant amount of truck traffic for the relatively small grocery store, um, but it would provide them a safe path to come in and come back out. So that was something, to be honest, we're kind of stuck with. Um, but it, it works for Aldi, and, and that was part of the plan to get Aldi to live here.
So essentially, your trucks are gonna be making a left uh, off that drive onto the entrance, and so they'll be passing in front of cars as they're coming in. Um, I think about, my, my concern about the children is that you're gonna be running trucks through their neighborhood. And uh, so I guess it's a little bit of a dilemma since you're required to do that.
You know, it's, it's a good point. Um, I, I would say from a livability perspective, it's, you know, it's probably not the, the completely best situation. Um, but I, I don't think that with it being Aldi, it's not like it's behind the Walmart Supercenter. I think that the volume of traffic will be reasonable. And we'd probably anticipate, I don't know when their deliveries are gonna be, they haven't built yet, um, but I don't think it's gonna be that much traffic. It's just gonna be, I, I don't even know how often they get inventory, if it's a couple times a week or not. And I don't think it's one of those things where they just come and go every day, but I certainly appreciate the concern with the children's safety. Um, you know, that's probably the only downside to this location, otherwise this project works for a number of reasons in this little niche.
So they won't be entering in that drive, they'll just be exiting? And can they exit, can they make a left turn out of their own driveway, or do they, are they required to come through that corner?
I don't, I, thank you for pointing out. Steve, do you think we could be, um, back up on the slides where I placed the development plan on top of that aerial? We could actually see the site plan for the store there.
Jason, slide three is up.
Yeah, it's slide three. Great, thank you. Um, let's see here. Well, uh, they certainly have a pretty good turning radius. It's an interesting graphic, I showed the Aldi grocery store. I'm not sure how that all worked out in terms of development. I, Steve, did you get the site plan for Aldi, or did a different planner work on that?
Another planner, Jason.
They did, okay. You know, I'm not a one-hundred percent certain, I can tell that the southernmost drive on that Aldi has got a pretty good turning radius to allow trucks in there. I just not certain that that's the one that Aldi's planning on using, or how they're gonna circulate to the store. Um, the, I believe the master developer representative is on the line, but I would have to follow up with that. I just know that um, our development was designed to accommodate them to go out to Roosevelt so that they could take a left out. I'm not a hundred percent certain if it was designed so that they could take a right in. I mean, they could, based on the width of the drives and the turning radiuses that have been provided. I'm just not sure if that's the ultimate plan, that everything goes in and out of that one drive. I, I wish I had Aldi on, on the line as well, but they don't.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Yes, Brandon Hampton?
Is there a different-sized wall between Aldi and that driveway? Or is it the same, is there a sound barrier or anything like that? Or is it the same, same around the entire development?
Did you just ask if there was wall around there?
Is there a different-sized wall with the grocery store, or is it the same exact around the entire wall, around entire development?
Mayor and Councilman, I believe it's a six-foot uh residential concrete block wall, so it would be the same size. I'm not aware that they proposed an eight-foot wall on the Aldi site plan.
They, they didn't? It's all six-foot?
I'm not aware, I'm not aware that they did.
Okay.
I think we, we proposed, we do have a um, a la, uh, a wall plan that's just uh included with our preliminary plat, um, application that should be seen hopefully in the next month. Uh, that would include a wall plan that shows the wall heights. We could always adjust the wall height if necessary at that time, but I think six-foot would be sufficient. And then the other thing I wanted to let you know is I did confirm that for the Councilman that asked about the access and circulation for trucks, um, it would be an exit only. So um, we would, we would have trucks exiting only out of that drive to Roosevelt.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Mayor, thank you. Um, as far as the wall goes, Councilmember Hampton, um, we want to ensure that there is not a dual-wall situation that takes place between Aldi and this particular proposed development. There would only be one wall, and it would be six feet.
Okay. And is there a sidewalk to go into the, into the Aldi parking lot from, from here? From the drive, the big driveway there? I see it looks like there's a sidewalk going up to...
So it's the connectivity you're asking about between that wall and Aldi?
Can I, can I walk to Aldi on a sidewalk, or am I walking in the street?
Mayor and Council, yes, there's a, a public sidewalk that would be provided, that would, I'm sorry, actually it's private, but there's a sidewalk on the south side of that little loop drive, so that people can safely cross from the front of the development over to Aldi without having to go out to Roosevelt.
Okay. And then this is just a question for staff. The district, what's the district zoned for right now? Is that commercial, or is that more housing?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hampton, I'll let Steve answer the district question. If I can just rewind a couple of moments for the turning movement question in regards to that. The right-turn movement into Aldi's property is certainly allowed and encouraged, but because of that median that's there at Roosevelt, there really is not a left-out, and the trucks certainly cannot make a U-turn there. So that's why there is that road that goes out, that lines up with the curb cut to, on that north property that you can see on this particular aerial. So that's in order to have a proper and safe circulation, not only for Aldi, but also for all of the residents in the Fulton Project who will be traversing across Roosevelt. So I just wanted to clear that up a little bit. I'll let, I'll defer to Steve on the district.
Yes, the district is a mix of uses. It was intended for everything you could think of in terms of commercial, retail, services, offices, as well as residential development. So you could have apartments and high-density residential...
You have to talk louder into that microphone, please.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious what to expect that way, so. Other than that, I mean, I do like the use, the look of it versus some of the other products that I've seen that are rental products. I like the diversity, I like the different elevations, I like the different colors. I like that some are not the, are more traditional-looking of a house, while others are the motor, motor park, like some of the, the other houses that we have, and courthouse-type houses that we have in Goodyear right now. So, so yeah, and this has always been, I think I brought it up a few times, that these houses could go to be condo, or they could sell them at some point in the future. So I know we've talked about it in the past, but I don't know, to everybody else's point, if there is a mechanism in place, if that does happen, or if the market changes, or people just, yeah, they see it as beneficial to sell versus renting in the future. So um, might be something to look into in the future, um, to have that mechanism in place if we think that's gonna go that way. But I do think it's a good product. I do like um, Councilman Campbell's thought around a playground, but I'm not sure what the clientele are gonna be here. But it looks like, I mean, the dog park, a, a big piece of grass, so it would be nice to have a, a tot lot or something like that here. But other than that, yeah, I think it's a, a good product, a good location, but it would be nicer if didn't have to have semi-trucks going through the same access point of everybody else. But I understand we can't have a cutout every, every quarter or a hundred feet though either, so. All right, thank you.
Sherry?
Mayor and Council, I may...
Oh, excuse me, go ahead.
I, I apologize, Mayor and Council, this is Jason. I wanted to reaffirm that we have actually identified the amenities that we believe are suited best for the target here. Um, the demographics that are intended for this project due to its location, it's gonna be kind of next to the district, behind the grocery store, sandwiched by the apartments. There could certainly be children in the development based on them being full single-family homes, but it will target teenagers and young professionals as well. So we wanted it to be more of a social gathering for, primarily for adults, but children as well. It just wouldn't have a tot lot. The tot lot would basically take up the space of the, the dog run. And we found that uh, a lot of communities are enjoying having, bringing their dogs together, it's kind of a social thing, so that's why they targeted that. So I, I just wanted to address it. We, we did contemplate that, and that was what the developer decided on based on who he's pretty certain are gonna be the people that wanna rent here. I also, uh, just if I may add, I did get confirmation from the master developer that it is a six-foot approved wall by Aldi. Their approvals preceded ours, and they were approved with a six-foot wall.
Sherry, go ahead.
Yeah, I kinda disagree on what you were saying about the target. I think when you're looking at three- and four-bedroom homes, you're gonna attract families, and those young professionals are going to have children pretty quickly. Um, so I do think if you could put a tot lot in there, I think that would be very So I do think if you could put a tot lot in there, I think that would be very beneficial because then you are, otherwise you're going to have kids just running around. If you have one-bedroom, two-bedroom, then you're getting the young professional, the professionals that aren't looking for children because they have the bedroom and the den or the workout room. But when you're talking three and four-bedroom homes, that's exactly you're going to get, you're going to get families, and that's what you're going to get in this, this area. It's not too far from the schools. So I would ask if you could get a tot lot and maybe the game lawn, you know, maybe convert part of that and some of the desert area around that into a tot lot. I think it would be much more beneficial. All of our other developments that we have have some sort of recreation, open space for kids. So I, I think that's probably a, a good thing, and I, they're not huge and they don't take up that much space.
Councilwoman and Mayor, you know, I could refer with the developer, you know, let's look, if you don't mind, after this hearing, we do come back with the preliminary plat and open space plan. We can, we're going to explore some of the tot lot child's play, but there's a lot of stuff out there that's quite fun, and then we'll see what we can do for that, with on that game lawn.
Is that okay? All right, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to add, add into that as well, and I, I think you're hearing from a majority of the council that a tot lot of some sort, Councilmember Campbell brought up a really good point. And I even think back to being in the live Goodyear community with two, three-bedroom, there were a lot of kids and there was no play area other than wide-open grass. And I, I think there it worked because there's no other place to actually go where here there's going to be somewhere to go. And we don't want to set up a situation where we're, where the Fulton Home Development residents who are paying HOA and whatnot are saying, hey, we're paying all this and all these other residents are coming here to use our tot lot. So I think between, I realize that that's not the issue tonight, the issue tonight is zoning, but I think when you come back before us with a preliminary plat, you probably need to have something figured out to, to get the majority of us behind that.
Go ahead, Christopher.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a quick refresher, if, if it is council's desire to require a tot lot or some other amenity for younger, or for children, I should say, now is the appropriate time to place that stipulation. Without a stipulation, although the developer has to come back to plat the property, they're not required to do so. So if, if it is council's pleasure to require this, now is the appropriate time to do so through the placement of an additional stipulation.
And I'm the only one that hasn't spoken yet, but anybody has second comments before we do this? Yes, Laura?
Okay, well, I'm still hung up on the driveway. As they are exiting out of that driveway before they turn into the drive towards Roosevelt, will they have a stop sign? Do they have to stop and wait for traffic?
Thank you, Councilman. Is that directed to me as the applicant? Or is it directed to staff? I'm not certain from a traffic perspective. I think it'd be, I think it's a great idea to have a stop sign there if we can. I honestly do. I don't know that we've gotten into the details of street signage yet for that, but I think it would be a great idea.
So this is Christopher, thank you for the question. As part of the preliminary plat process, we'll be evaluating the traffic through the engineering review process. So we'll look at the placement of stop signs and traffic control and things of that nature. So when that comes back to you, that will be resolved.
Okay, Christopher. And just, just clarify for me, this, this was decided long before this development that they were going to have to provide access, is that correct?
Mayor and Council, that is correct. It was, it was decided prior to our acquisition of the property.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I can confirm that's correct. It was part of the discussion of Aldi and how wide their property was going to be and the way that they could get delivery and traffic through, to their site.
Okay. I just think this is unfortunate to have to run trucks behind the neighborhood like that and through their driveway.
Question's finished? I, okay, show me again the walkway they can take into Aldi. Did I hear that? Am I, did I hear that correctly, that they can enter from, there will be an entrance from that street for the neighborhood?
Mayor and Council, we did work with the developer, and that sidewalk, it'll be a shaded sidewalk and separated from the street, so you'll have it right here. Because you'll take a sidewalk out of the development, you'll wrap this corner on the south side of the shared drive, and that'll take you right into the Aldi parking lot. There's also another smaller restaurant proposed here, so those residents will be able to access both.
The road itself will extend in there. I tell you, I'm going to be real honest with you, that, that has bothered me lately is all the homeless that gathered behind Target and those other ones. And so this, right, this gives actual access to the neighborhood too, and I'm concerned about that. All right, I wish I could say it won't happen and we won't have that problem, but we do at this time, and I just, I just want to be sure that the children aren't going in between there and, 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 and without talking about it. Joe?
You know what assume does, I'm not going to assume anything, but I, but I would imagine there's a gate that's probably got some type of lock or some type of combination on that walkway to going back and forth. So the only ones getting through there are the people that live in that development as opposed to somebody who's leaving Aldi parking lot to work the neighborhood and coming back the other way? Is that a fair assumption?
Mayor and Council, if I may add, this will be gated, and yes, there'll be a pedestrian access gate on the side of the drive. If you see where the drive turns and tucks into the neighborhood, where there's a gate there. So people won't really be able to freely go in and out unless you have gate access or a little key if you're walking.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Brandon.
Thank you for that explanation. Any other comments? I think the selection of homes, I think the square footage, I think it's interesting, it's something different and new to people. I think the neighborhood will be delightful, talking about the tot lot. As a past salesperson for this type of home, I think it'd be detrimental if you don't put them on in, because now you're, you're making a decision of the individuals that will move into your neighborhood. And in this day's market, with the changing of dollars to buy a home, people are making different choices and making some sacrifices and then buying beyond what they can afford. So this, this is a nice combination here by the different ways of rental, buy and all of that. So my advice on that ended, I think the council definitely thinks you need one, and, and I would think that it would be advantageous for you.
Thank you, Mayor. I've spoken to the developer, we totally agree, and we will put a tot lot in. It'll be reflected, we'd be happy with a stipulation added to the zoning ordinance that's before you tonight, and we will reflect the tot lot on the preliminary plat and landscape plans that will be coming before you as the next step in the process.
Okay, all discussions finished? Just let me tell you, we won't be talking about the tot lot on this vote, it'll be on the next, next item on the agenda, okay? So we have, open for discussion. It's finished, so I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzello?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, let's go on to the next page, and we have to adopt that ordinance? Is that where we're at now?
I have to read the ordinance.
She has to read it memo.
I can't hear, I'm sorry.
She has to read it.
I know, I know that. I just want to make sure this is the one that we're going to adopt that at.
You'll make the, yes.
Yeah, okay. So city clerks, please read the ordinance?
Adopt ordinance number 2020-1465, conditionally rezoning approximately 7.6 acres from preliminary planned area development pad to final planned area development pad for a new development to be known as the curve at Estrella Commons Planned Area Development. Amending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve ordinance number 2020-1465?
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we adopt the ordinance with the stipulation that we include a tot lot in this.
Shaded turnkey tot lot, please.
Shaded turnkey tot lot.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I heard of a motion by Vice Mayor Stip, a second by Councilman Campbell. Open for council discussion. Well, let's say that we're very happy about this. Let's give the developer some credit that he's so versatile, saying he can do this, and since it was all of your concerns, we greatly appreciate it. So let's do a roll call.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell? Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzello?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, let's go on to the next, the second public hearing. I live to consider amending the City of Goodyear zoning ordinance, commercial district standards for the dimension requirement setback. Open the public hearing. Planner Christian Williams presenting.
I didn't bring a scooter today, but I did get dressed for the first time in quite some time, so you got that. So to that end, before you hear this evening, with a request from the city to conduct a zoning ordinance text amendment for our commercial district standards. The proposed amendment would impact the entire City of Goodyear, and it would impact our neighborhood commercial zoning, C1, and our general commercial zoning, C2. Specifically, it would impact the minimum commercial front setbacks and unified shopping The first question you might have is, what exactly is a front setback? The front setback is measured from the front of the lot. In the picture on the left, you will see an existing commercial lot from the pedestrian or car point of view. The lines show you the front setback. For more clarity, the picture on the right shows an existing commercial lot within the city. You can see it is L-shaped, and the building is approximately 99 feet from the front of the lot. As you'll recall, the front of the lot is the narrowest of the two lot lines, the one adjacent to the street or the line that is obviously the front. Currently, the Goodyear zoning ordinance, Article III, Section 3-3-6, on commercial district standards, provides requirements in subsection A on commercial districts' dimension requirements. A building should be at minimum of 30 feet from the front of the lot line in a C1 and a C2 zoning district. We looked at some of our neighboring and fast-growing valley cities and found that two cities, two in the West Valley, measured only from the front of the lot for building setbacks. However, with Buckeye, this is negligible because Buckeye has no setbacks. Peoria has a 15-foot setback, and if you move further to the right of the column, Chandler and Glendale measure from the right-of-way and require 50-foot or 20-foot. Gilbert generally requires 50-foot setbacks from the front of the lot, except if it is within a master site plan, commercial subdivision, or development plan, those can be waived, those requirements can be waived. As an item of note, we do have at least one proposal into the city to create a lot on, in a larger commercial center that has buildings on the front of the lot, but the building is more than 400 feet from the nearest roadway. We cannot process these lot creations or lot splits without a zoning ordinance text amendment change. So our staff-proposed solution would be to keep our front lot setback, but allow it to be eliminated under certain circumstances and applicable to the public roadway. Goodyear's proposing we measure from the nearest public street, similar to the cities on the right like Gilbert, and allow for an exception when it is within a unified shopping center. So let's discuss those circumstances and practical applications on the next slide. So if an applicant has a request in, and they have a building further than 30 feet from a roadway, but would like to create a lot where the building would be closer than 30 feet from the front lot line, this zoning ordinance text amendment would add some flexibility. The flexibility would be provided if the lot is in a large unified shopping center that has cross-access to the parcel, has ample parking and shared parking agreements, and the lot is still further than 30 feet from the closest public roadway. On the right, you will see an example of a large unified shopping center. You can see that the lot highlighted on the left, which contains multiple stores and parking areas, are all on one lot. There is a star denoted on the image on the left and the right to give you some perspective as to where you are when we discuss this example. This is a large big-box shop, our store, located deeply setback in the lot. More specifically, the big-box store in question is located more than 900 feet from the closest public street. It is also located behind several other buildings. On the right, let's assume that a few of the big-box store owners wanted to locate their businesses on separate lots or split their buildings onto a new lot for ownership purposes. The yellow lines show the proposed new lot lines. Keep in mind that while the lots have changed, the building is still a part of a property owners association, a POA, which is very similar to an HOA. They still share the same access to parking, and they still maintain cross-access easements and agreements. The buildings have not changed, nor has their distance from the road, just the front of the lot line. With our current ordinance, this would not be possible, even though the buildings are still more than 900 feet from the nearest public street. However, if we amend Article III, zoning districts, Section 3-3-6, commercial district standards, subsection A, which are the district requirements for C1 neighborhood commercial and C2 general commercial, and make it so the front lot setback would not apply for lots with any unified commercial development, which is development intended for three or more businesses, so long as the development has permanent cross-access, shared parking and access easements necessary to meet the minimum parking and maneuvering requirements, and the buildings are further than 30 feet from the nearest public street, with an order that changed, the example on the right would be possible. The buildings are still more than 900 feet from the nearest street in both examples and have the cross-access needed. Before we go into the recommendation, I want to read a couple comments that we received as staff. These are two emails concerning the proposal we have here. The first comment is from Susan Demmett of GB Law. She says, "I'm writing to express support for the text amendment for case 20-220," four zeros and a two, that's our planning case number, "which proposes to modify the front setback requirements within a unified commercial shopping center, similar to the text amendment approved last month that modifies lot with standards within a unified commercial shopping district. The proposed amendment is a practical response to an unanticipated impact of the current zoning ordinance standards. Approval of the proposed amendment will reinforce Goodyear's commitment to being responsive to the issues facing the development community while protecting the intent of the zoning ordinance." And she says, "I encourage the city council to vote in support of the proposed amendment." She sends her best regards. The second email is from Carolyn Oberhertz, and she is from BFSO Law, and she says, "Hope you're all are well. Our office is in the process of preparing several entitlement packages for some middle in Goodyear, and we anticipate, and we appreciate how the City of Planning Department has responded to the multiple questions on each of these interesting times. We feel that we aren't, we aren't in any way being hampered in our ability to resolve outstanding issues or items with the current distancing measures in your jurisdictions, so kudos to you and your team for all that you're doing. I received a copy of this text amendment from Susan Demmett, and she indicated that it would be helpful if you received comments. To that end, we believe the attached revisions will help to streamline this development process for commercial businesses, enable the development of products with better visibility and access to right-of-way, and we appreciate this change to the zoning ordinance text amendment." She says, "Thanks." So with that, I skipped a slide.
All right.
Apologies. We recommend, our staff recommendation is that you amend Article III, zoning districts, Section 336, commercial districts, subsection A, which is applying to C1 and C2 areas for the front lot setbacks, and that would not apply for lots with any unified commercial development, which has three or more businesses and has cross-access easements, shared parking, access easements, and minimum parking, and the building is further than 30 feet from the nearest public road. And with that, ordinance change example in the slide would be possible.
Thank you very much. Did we have any questions or comments?
No, Mayor.
Good, I'm going to close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read ordinance number 2020-1464, by title only?
Adopt ordinance number 2020-1464, amending Article III, zoning districts of the zoning ordinance as amended by amending Section 3-3-6, commercial district standards, subsection A, dimension requirements for C1 neighborhood commercial districts and C2 general commercial district to modify how minimum front setbacks are determined under certain circumstances, providing for correction, severability, and effective date and penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve ordinance number 2020-1464? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Pizzello and a second by Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion. I heard a motion by Councilman Pizzillo and a second by Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion? Councilman Campbell?
Christian, is this the follow-up to my question the last, when we adopted the last request, that we just cleaned it all up? And they said they didn't have time to do it? Is this in response to that now?
This isn't, but we had these two in process before that comment was brought to our attention. We will have some zoning ordinance text amendments coming before council that are more comprehensive. But in regards to the commercial centers, the ones that we had in process to deal with the projects that were before us, we were working with a streamlined process versus batching them and sending them all at once. But we do have another effort underway to clean up the zoning ordinance text.
So are we going to see this again when you bring the package back so that we can get it all cleaned up once and for all? Instead of seeing it piecemeal like this?
We have a couple items that we've batched together that we're bringing forward. But with these commercial ones, they've been in process because we've had applicants that have come forward, and we've noticed that the intent of the zoning ordinance, how it was written, wasn't meeting that intent. But if Mr. Baker wants to add.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Councilperson Campbell, we certainly heard your concern last month, and we are working on it. We are bringing that forth. As Christian pointed out, we have some of these other issues that have been identified a couple, a month or two, two and a half months ago, that we wanted to help solve for our customers so they can move forward now. And instead of holding all of this up and bringing it in one big package to you, we're bringing them to you a little bit incrementally. So in order to help our customers move forward through the processes as expeditiously as possible.
Okay, so when you come back, I'm not going to, you're not going to ask me to reduce the 30 in the front to 15?
No, ma'am.
It's going to stay 30, and you're going to come back and talk about the other end?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I'm okay with this within the shopping center, but I'd like you to be a little bit more broad.
Yes, ma'am. Understood.
What I'm looking for.
Understood.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Christopher. Any other questions? Oh, Councilman Pizzillo.
Just a comment. It's reasonable to me.
It is. We just need to get it all done.
Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, no, I agree. Thank you, thank you to staff for being flexible and trying to meet the needs of, as we're growing, and we keep finding things like that that are unique like this, just to make sure that we keep moving forward. So I'm looking forward to, yeah, more unified and streamlined processes, so thank you.
All right, thank you. So let's have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we're going down to business. I'd like to remind council to wait for a motion and a second before discussion. Our first item on business is to consider approving a comprehensive sign package for Goodyear Village Center. And Planner Christian Williams that's with us is going to present.
I feel like I'm at home again because I didn't have to move anywhere.
Yeah, that's great.
So I'm still here before you this evening. But this is a request from an applicant, Joe Walters, for a comprehensive sign package for the Goodyear Village Center. The Goodyear Village Center is located in the central area of our city. It is located at the northwest corner of North Litchfield Road and West Van Buren Street, near the location of the red box on the screen. The larger center is adjacent to the Burger King and Angry Crab Restaurant, some of our local favorites right there. And I will discuss the specific boundaries of this proposal on the next slide. To quickly discuss the boundaries of the proposed area, the center is an older center within the community. The proposal will impact three of the parcels before you today. The parcels ending in 028, 029, and 030 will be impacted by the proposal. The other businesses are on different parcels and are each owned by different entities. Each of the businesses not included in this proposed comprehensive sign package already has a small sign along Litchfield Road. The first component of this comprehensive sign package is a multi-tenant monument sign, which will address signage needs for, needs of the tenants and the strip of businesses that are north of Didi's Discounts, the ones to the left of the screen, as well as Didi's Discounts, Dollar Tree, Goodwill, and also the businesses on the south side of the strip, which is south of Goodwill, so that's the right of your screen. The proposal is to add an 18-foot-tall monument sign on North Litchfield Road and a second 18-foot-tall monument sign on West Van Buren Street. These signs are indicated by the letter A and look like the sign on the left. The style and color scheme will match the newly remodeled center, as you can see from the pictures on the right. And in order to be a good neighbor and to add to the attractiveness along North Litchfield Road, the applicant has worked with an out parcel owner to have one of their smaller signs removed. The sign indicated by the letter C will be removed, which means the number of signs along Litchfield Road will not increase. The proposed 18-foot-tall sign is also in line with existing signs approved at the Litchfield and Van Buren Street area. For example, the Goodyear Financial Center, which is located just north of City Hall, across the street from the proposed sign, already has an 18-foot, six-inch sign. And the Palm Valley Crossing's Big Lot Center has a 16-foot sign. So this proposal and this sign is shorter than the tallest sign in that general area. The second component is regarding size of wall signs, specifically for tenants occupying 9,000 square feet or more of space. Currently, our sign ordinance states that for each elevation of the building, you're allowed one square foot of sign area for every linear foot of building frontage or 35 square feet, whichever is greater. This is what is shown on the top of the screen. What is, what is existing for the major tenants in the center today? So the top picture is what we have out there today. The comprehensive sign package proposes a size of 1 1/2 square feet for each linear foot of sign, for each linear foot of building frontage. The image on the bottom is an example of the signage opportunities the center's major tenants would have if this plan were adopted today. So again, on the top, you have what's existing and what's allowed. On the bottom is what's proposed for those major tenants only. The third provision is for slightly larger shingle signs. A shingle sign is located under the canopy of the building and helps pedestrians see which stores they are approaching. The city currently allows for signs that are three square feet. The applicant requests signs that are four square feet within this area. And the last provision also pertains to tenants occupying 9,000 square feet or more of space. This would allow them to add three window graphics that cover an entire window. Currently, the city allows tenants to cover only 25% of their windows for on-premise advertisements or graphics. This would allow the major tenants to do something similar to what you see on the right. Advertise what is in their stores on a complete window. And of note, the canopies of this building are very deep, so the signage on the windows is quite recessed for the major tenants. So staff has evaluated the impacts of this comprehensive sign package for Goodyear Village Center, and with no major concerns being found, staff recommends you approve the Goodyear Village Center with the stipulations found in the staff report. And with that.
Thank you. Are there any comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then can I have a motion, a second, to approve the comprehensive sign package titled "Goodyear Village Center Master Sign Plan", subject to stipulations listed in the council action report? Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Loretano and a second by Councilman Kano. Open for council discussion? Councilman Loretano?
Thank you very much for bringing this forward. Everything that's happened for our retailers, I know even before this, they were having problems with all the online. And now, you know, we need to do whatever we can to direct customers, to help them out, to help showcase what's in their stores. And I think it's well done. It's tasteful. And hopefully, it'll help tell people what's in there and what they can get, so I appreciate it. So thank you.
Councilman Kano?
I'm just, have a curiosity question about the window graphics. What's the logic for only 25% initially? I mean, is it, I'm just curious.
I can't speak to that particularly, but I know that sometimes when you cover whole windows and banners, you can't see what's in them and things like that, but.
Mayor, if I may, thank you for the question, Councilmember Kano. The philosophy behind limiting the amount of window signage really has to do with public safety so that in the event of emergency, as Christian was alluding to, the first responders have an opportunity of seeing what's going on in the building.
Okay, so in this case, they can only cover part of their windows entirely? They still have to leave some windows where you can see in?
Yes, and in particular in this center, the fronts of those stores just have a lot of window space. So generally speaking, you'd only be able to cover 25% of each of those windows. This gives them an opportunity to cover three of those, and then the rest of the remaining windows could only cover 25.
Thank you.
So you also don't get that clutter as well.
Right. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilman Stip? Vice Mayor Stip, excuse me.
Whatever.
I don't want to take your promotion away.
I appreciate that, but. The overall concept of, of the exterior signage for this, the monument signs, 100% behind. I get that. What I'm worried about is this will be the floodgate that opens for every other center to come through to increase their signage on the exterior of the building, to put, you know, block all of their, their windows, to add the larger pillar signs. I think of a number of other strip centers throughout the community that we're going to look at completely altering by opening this, this particular door. I'm very concerned about that. I mean, I, I don't, I'm the last guy to say, let's, let's reduce signage because I've been fighting for signs for businesses since I got elected. But I'm really worried about us changing our standards for one place and then not for anywhere else. I realize this is in our redevelopment area, and I would be okay with that being kind of added to this, that we're only going to do that in redevelopment areas so that we don't, you know, two months from now, we're doing another one, three months from now, we're doing yet another one, and four months from now, we're doing another one because it's really cool to be able to have your larger sign. But we went, we got to a point for, for the look of our community, for maintaining that, that we, that we've done those, you know, taken certain actions. The pillar pylon, I don't know.
Monument sign.
Monument sign, thank you. Those are necessary, and I've always believed that we've been way under in what we've allowed on our monument signs. But I think once we move to changing it on the front of the building, and now they can add their tagline, and now we can, it's just going to, it's going to turn into a, it's going to turn into a NASCAR, is what our buildings are going to look like. If you think about all the stickers along the side of a, of a race car, there's, for every, every drop of oil, there's a sticker for that company and the tire company. And I, I'm concerned about that. And again, if we're doing it in the, in the, under the guise of, this is the redevelopment area, we want to go one step farther, I'm totally okay with that. But once we start making a permanent change to other cases in other locations throughout the city that have enjoyed their location as opposed to their inability to be seen from the road, I think there's a huge difference there.
You make, you make a really good point, Vice Mayor. And the zoning ordinance gives us minimum requirements or minimum standards for what signage developments can put in place. But the mechanism for development to add signage or add differences, that's a council decision. So we vet those. Staff worked with them to say, if you're going to do this, you need to limit it to the larger tenant so we don't have banners everywhere. But that, you're absolutely right, Vice Mayor, and that's why when we get these requests, we bring them before you as the council to make the decision to say, is this the right place for this larger allotment of signage?
Christopher, do you have a comment?
Yes, ma'am, just if I may add, thank you.
Please make it.
Just as a little bit of context, thank you, Vice Mayor Stip, for your comment. I cannot think of another shopping center in the City of Goodyear that does not already have an approved comprehensive sign package. So they're all already a little bit different. So I just wanted to point that out, not to be argumentative.
No, that's good, good information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Kano?
And Mayor, I'm really glad, well, I'm glad to see that they're going to put a bigger sign up because that corner, that entire shopping center, has been depressed for so long. And we're just now starting to get businesses to come in there. And I think they want to reinforce what is now there because the public for so long knew that it was empty. So I just wish that it was a more colorful sign. I'm tired, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm done with desert colors and browns and things like that. But I'm so happy to see it because a lot of folks do not know what actually is in there other than I think it's Autozone or some parts store that's always been there. And I think it's really needed on that corner to get the business to come back.
Councilman Pizzillo?
Yeah, I appreciate your efforts. I have a tendency to agree with Councilmember Loretano. We're in some really challenging times, and anything that you can do to help our businesses, whether it's increasing the signing or putting something on the window, because it's going to be interesting, whatever we decide, or whenever the governor decides they're going to loosen up this, is how we're going to get people back into these stores. And anything we can do to direct them or make it easier for them to find them, I think it's a good partnership that we have with businesses. So I thank you for your efforts.
Councilman Hampton, anything else?
I agree.
All right, it's my turn. Do you know how many requests we've had for these larger signs since I've been on the council since 2005? It's always been that way. And we have not always come to the table to make the best for the, for the, you know, for the, for the businesses. And if you drive around the city, you see that. So I, I'm not so much worried about that we'll get a barrage. You may. It's the business. They need the business, and if you can't notice it from the roadside and it isn't noticeable, you don't get the business. They don't have sidewalks in front of some of these, you know, they're set back from, from the street. So when you say there isn't a place, and sorry, I don't remember the name of the area, but by the stadium, where I think there is an Italian restaurant in it, we had bingo in there.
Taste of Italy?
Yeah.
What's the name of it?
Taste of Italy.
There is a prime example because the owner of the property would not put a different sign up, you know? And so there's, there's a prime example. Have they changed their signs? Because we certainly didn't give them a permission, I don't think, back then.
That center, they had a signage package approved with the zoning. So they didn't come through the, the new comprehensive sign package manner, but the developer of that center included it at the time. The way we did it was they did it with the zoning.
So he changed it, then?
They, they put that in the zoning, so when they approved the zoning, it came with the signage package.
All right, that's great. So I, I don't have that fear because I think we have some control over it. If they come to the table with something that is over the percentage or, or doesn't meet the requirements, we'll say no, you know? So I, I think so. I think it's a great idea. And I would like to see that area, that shopping center, be more successful. And we're growing in population in the areas, and I think they should, should have that chance, so. I'm going to vote for this. So any other discussion? All right, let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on business is consider approving the First Amendment to the Digital Marquee Placement License Agreement. And now we have our city attorney, Royce Massey, presenting. Massey presenting.
Christian didn't look like he wanted to leave. I thought maybe he wanted to.
Okay.
Good shit for me on this one.
Well, we can see your face completely now. You're always, we see your cheeks over there, so.
I'm hiding on my island back there. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item, the last item on tonight's agenda is a proposed First Amendment to the Digital Marquee Placement License Agreement between the city and Clear Channel Communications. A little history on this. This was an agreement the city entered into back in 2012. It's a 25-year real estate lease between, for the placement of digital marquees, which are the large electronic signs adjacent to ITN. One is at the Park and Ride site, a little west of Dysart. The other one, I think, is about a mile west of that location. The license is 25 years in length. We have about 17 years left on the license. Clear Channel generally pays the city about $17,000 a month for their real estate lease. That is divided between the two signs. It's broken down, I think, in your car. And the reason it is, is because of the location of the one sign on the Park and Ride site under the FTA or Federal Transit Authority regulations. Any revenues generated on the Park and Ride site have to go for transit purposes. So for budgeting purposes, every month, half goes to transit projects, the other half is general fund eligible. About a, then one other term is the city does get the right to place advertisement on the signs on a monthly basis. And I'll hit that in a second because that's going to factor into the proposed amendment.
into the proposed amendment. About, uh, end of March, beginning of April, city manager's office was contacted by Clear Channel Communications, uh, asking for some temporary relief, uh, to their monthly lease payments, and that's due to the, uh, significant economic downturn. Um, they asked, uh, on the front end whether we would consider , uh, temporary rent reductions of up to 50%. Uh, going out, uh, their first ask was for a year. Uh, and that's generally based upon, um, their evaluation of traffic counts, um, on the highway that are down about 50%. Uh, they use a program called GeoTrack, which they said is a little bit like Nielsen and it tracks cars, uh, on, on the highways. And they said in their market areas, they're down about 50%. So that's 50% less eyeballs that are, are looking at their billboards. They're also, uh, starting to become noticed on their advertising contracts from their, uh, their customers, uh, with their notice provisions, uh, to cancel upcoming advertisement. They shared the number of what their advertising downturn's gonna be. Uh, it is a little bit proprietary, but, uh, they did share it with us and it is significant in, in the near term and projecting out into the long term. Uh, so based upon the changing market conditions and the long-term nature of our, our agreement with them, uh, they did ask for some temporary relief. Uh, so we did enter into, uh, discussions, uh, on an amendment to the agreement, uh, to present to council. Uh, we wound up with a three-month, uh, reduction in rent, uh, that is about $25,000, $24,000, uh, beginning in May, uh, running through June and July of this year, uh, to provide some relief for them. It also gave us an opportunity, uh, to revisit some terms of the agreement and had to, having to do with city advertisement. Uh, a little terminology has changed, uh, since 2012 on how the signs are programmed and how the advertising is sold. Um, our language didn't really line up with how they sell packages of advertisement at this point. We were provided 10 hours of advertisement on, uh, as a matter of right on a monthly basis to, uh, put up city advertisement for our programs. We can all also advertise spring training and ballpark activities with an additional 10 hours of time, uh, on a space available basis. Due to some of the changing in terminology, we were having some difficulty, uh, in placing some of our, uh, advertisement and calculating the amount of time we were getting. So during the course of this, uh, they, uh, Clear Channel did suggest, uh, some changes to that to give us a little bit more priority, uh, changing the terminology from hours to days of advertising because it's, it's in eight-second blocks in these blocks of advertisements. So what the outcome was, an amendment that will survive the entirety of the agreement for the next 17 years, uh, so instead of the calculation of 10 days of advertising a month that we're getting on the billboards, excuse me, marquees, uh, it'll be up to 14 days. So we are getting increased placement on the billboards of our advertising, uh, as well as a little more priority of use. So it's 14 days plus an additional 14 days on a space available basis, um, in contrast to the previous language, which equated to 10 days plus 10 days. Uh, and with that, I did, uh, sit, uh, on a call with Tammy, Tammy Boe, who is our contact with the city who utilizes the advertisement, uh, walking through the proposed changes with Diana Veras, which is the regional, uh, president for Clear Channel. And Tammy is comfortable with the new language as far as, uh, our ability to utilize the billboard. So, uh, the proposed amendment does, uh, grant some financial relief for, uh, short-term for Clear Channel, uh, does have some advantages for the city long-term as far as our ability to program, uh, our city advertisement on the billboards. Now, one other thing I would note, you do have a copy of a contract in the agreement. It is missing one sentence, uh, as far as the 14 days of additional advertisement. I have already, uh, touched base with Diane and we're gonna fix the final draft before it's signed to account for the additional 14 days of city usage on a monthly basis. And with that, I would answer any questions you might have.
All right, just wait a minute. Uh, can I have a motion a second to approve the First Amendment to the Digital Marquee Placement License Agreement with Clear Channel Outdoor LLC? Do I hear a motion?
It's all moved.
Second. I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Stip and Council, a second from Councilwoman Bazillo. Open for council discussion. Councilwoman Loretano?
I have a couple of concerns with this. First of all, thank you for your hard work and, and I do understand where the economy is right now. I heard, um, and I tried to look it up, that Clear Channel is selling a 50-point, the article I have in front of me isn't the one I found before, but a 50.91 stake to a company based in China.
Okay.
Um, so that does give me some heartburn. I'd also like to know whether they have CARES funding or if they got any CARES funding as a public corporation from the stimulus package, because that would also be something I'd be concerned about when small businesses didn't get it. And the fact that we're going to give them a break and we've got our actual small businesses, I would prefer to use that money, um, rather than to a publicly traded corporation to help them out, especially if they're being partially sold to a foreign entity on majority stake. I would prefer to do something, what Tempe did perhaps, and set up some sort of funding for our small businesses, our mom and pop operations, rather than a Fortune 500 corporation. So that's just where I'm at right now. I, I don't really think I have all the information if the sale, if that sale, this is dated March 20th or March, um, 30th, 2020. Um, I, I just have problems going for the, you know, the publicly traded corporation, whereas we've got mom and pops that, you know, that's a lot of money. $25,000 could help four or five businesses make it through in the next month while the shutdown's going on. So I, I gotta go with our hometown people and I understand, but especially if they're being sold to an entity out of China.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Loretano. I don't know the answer to those questions. Uh, if it's important for tonight's vote, uh, Ms. Veras is available and I can give her a call and get the answers to those questions, uh, but I understand your policy comments as well.
Next, Councilwoman Bazillo?
With the Arizona gift clause, to follow up on Councilmember Loretano's question, are we allowed to do something of a grants or something to supplement small businesses?
Yeah.
That's a con, a little bit of a different question, probably a little bit outside of tonight's scope. Uh, I, I am somewhat aware of the Tempe program and I think it's something that if council's interested in, we can get with the city manager and we can report back on how that could be designed. Again, I think that's probably outside of tonight's agenda, so probably not fair game for discussion, but I understand.
Would it be, would it be fair to do a little more research and maybe, uh, table it and come back with it?
As far as the program or this contract?
Of this contract.
Uh, as far as Councilmember Loretano's questions, I can. I can also, um, get the answers to those two questions probably this evening before we adjourn.
Councilman Campbell?
Well, I've got concerns with this because it is dated the 30th of March and we really didn't even get shuttered in until all of April. So how, you know, they're asking for relief before we really know what's going on and if we give it to one company, what's to say other companies are gonna come to us and ask for the relief? Um, I, I mean, I'm sympathetic with them, but I am not in favor of changing their contract. I don't, by us changing it, I don't think they're giving us enough back. If we've had difficulty getting our, um, our messages out without this, I have no guarantee they're gonna honor what they say they, they do. So I'm, I'm really not in favor of this.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Loretano? I'm sorry, Councilwoman Caneau?
So they originally asked for a year, but what you've, the terms you came to was a three-month?
Yes.
Three-month with no extensions, it's just three-month?
No, some of the language they proposed was, uh, three-month rolling extensions, um, based on the direction of the city manager. We did not, uh, present that to the council. Uh, our position was three months was what we would present to the council.
Okay.
Um, as well as the amendment to the language as far as city, um, placement of advertisement, which, getting back to Councilmembers, uh, so, kind of a little ancillary question about gift clause, um, I think that does solve any gift clause issues with this amendment, that we are getting something in return, which would be the increased advertisement on the sign.
Okay, so this is a one-time agreement with, from which we get a 17-year, uh, increase in our time, uh, that we can use it. So, okay, I, I guess because of the timing and that it's a very short-term, I'm not as opposed as, in case we were going for a longer term.
Vice Mayor Stip?
I would be curious to know the answer to the questions if we can get that tonight. Um, I think that would be important for us to, to.
Which question?
The questions that Councilmember Loretano had asked and, uh, the attorney had said he could get answers to them by.
Could you repeat that question?
By calling.
Councilwoman, uh, Loretano had two questions. One, whether or not the 50% stake was being sold to a Chinese company, and the second was whether they received any, uh, federal funding, uh, for the small businesses. Yes.
I, I would be curious to know the answer to those questions because I, I think she's got the, the point is, we should not be providing essentially CARES Act funding to, to a company who's already receiving it. Um, I'm not sure how far 20, I mean, I know $25,000 is a lot of money and it'll go a long way, but I'm not sure how many businesses that'll actually help, not to mention the staff time it will take for us to try to dull that out. But, um, I'd like to know the answer to those questions before we vote on it tonight. And if we can't do it tonight, I'm, I'm in favor of tabling it till we can come back.
Any other comments? Well, I wasn't, you know, so against this. I was thinking of voting for the extra time. We could put things up that we've never had the opportunity to put up that would be very helpful to the city and to the community. But since it's been brought up, that somebody wants more information on Sherry's original question, I think that we should delay the vote on this until... City Manager?
Um, if I may propose, I have two communication items that are a little bit more lengthy than normal, so if we wanted to have Rorick try to get those answers and we proceeded with the rest of the agenda, I think you could just table this for the moment and while we're still in session, might be able to come back.
Uh, City Manager just recommended tabling, uh, this item for a few minutes and then she'll go through the communications items with you. I'll make a quick phone call and have those answers and then we can.
Great, okay.
Revisit the item.
All right.
If that works.
All right, so we're gonna take.
Table.
Time off.
Okay.
For the public that might be listening, we're checking on some information on the questions that were asked. So we're going to take a few minutes to see if we can derive
Would you like me to?
You have the floor.
Start? Okay, Mayor, thank you. So I wanted to informally, uh, more informally than the last council meeting, um, provide an update on our COVID activities here at the city of Goodyear. So as of this morning, Arizona has just over 6,700 confirmed cases of COVID-19 with 275 confirmed deaths. Goodyear has a total of 45 recorded positive cases with 18 in zip code 85395 and 27 now in 85338. As I mentioned last time, we do have residents that are in the Litchfield Park zip code, but those are not separated out separately for Goodyear residents, so we haven't been reporting on them. So Governor Ducey's stay-at-home order expires, uh, this Thursday, April 30th, and, uh, I know us probably along with the rest of the state are anxiously waiting his announcement as to what comes next. Uh, we understand from his staff, there are three options. One is to let it lax, one is to let it expire, one's to let it expire, one is to extend the current restrictions, and then the third option, which I think many of us believe is most likely, is that he will extend it, but also relax some of the current provisions. Um, the Goodyear team has been working diligently to create plans for what a Phase 1, 2, and 3 under the presidential, um, you know, phasing plan looks like. Um, but we're of course waiting to know the dates upon which those triggers can be released. So we're gonna be prepared to react immediately upon having that information. In Goodyear, uh, the staff continues to find new and innova- ways, innovative ways to provide important services to the residents while practicing social distancing, such as our fire department has created a two-person advanced life support unit that works during, I believe, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM to address patients just with COVID-19 symptoms. Our Economic Development Department continues to connect businesses with resources to help them apply for those federal dollars through the CARES Act and to help with the funding to keep small businesses afloat. The Economic Development Department is also running a six-week campaign to highlight our local restaurants and to encourage our residents to continue to do the takeout and delivery options to help those small businesses. Our Recreation Department has hosted successful e-gaming programs that allows, uh, residents of all ages to participate in game, organized gaming activities online. And then last, but probably what I was most excited about is the Goodyear Library is now providing materials through curbside pickup and offering Wi-Fi access in the Goodyear Library parking lot. In honor of the governor's campaign to light Arizona blue, our city buildings in various locations are lit blue at night. It's a symbol of our support for frontline medical workers and emergency responders battling this crisis. The employees in Goodyear have been doing a tremendous job and they're committed to serving our residents and have been incredibly adaptable during these challenges. But I also want to thank our residents for their support of all that we do. The residents and businesses are finding ways to support first responders, including drawing chalk murals in front of our fire stations and delivering food to our healthcare workers when they need the support the most. So with that, I just wanted to give a brief update of our activities on COVID, uh, unless there's any questions or comments.
I'm gonna ask, yeah. It, it's nice that you took the time tonight to tell us about that because there's some good things happening. Any comments from the council questions? Yeah, Councilwoman Loretano?
Thank you so much and thank your whole team. I, I really do appreciate everything from the arts program to the parks, you know, trying to keep people involved and connected. And I really like the fact, I saw that in the, I think I just saw the, on Facebook or something about the library. I think that's such a good idea and the Wi-Fi because we have And the Wi-Fi, because we have many people that may not have Wi-Fi at home and that does give them the opportunity to stay connected. So thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Vazillo.
Yeah, I don't know if it's possible to get, but is there any way we can get numbers for Goodyear on how many people have been unemployed or what the unemployment rate has jumped up that are residents of Goodyear? It would be just kind of nice to get a feel for what that impact is that are residents of Goodyear.
I would be glad to follow up with more information on that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Campbell.
My question is, is there any way we can find out how many Goodyear-specific small businesses have received federal PPP money? I know 19,000 businesses have received it, but how many are Goodyear? Because we need to know how this is really affecting our city.
Yes, I think it would be nice to know how many applied and how many have received funding.
Biden, how many actually received it?
Not sure if that's available, but I'll certainly look into it.
Councilwoman Hampton.
I also agree. I think the library events and the different activities are great. I know my kids want to do the Minecraft one this week as well. So, and yeah, the Wi-Fi, even before, I know people have been out there in their cars wanting to get on the Wi-Fi. So I do appreciate expanding it a little farther in the parking lot for people who don't, who don't have that or kids who don't, can't get through the schoolwork or things like that. So I think it's important to have those kind of resources available. And then, yeah, it would be nice to have more numbers on the small businesses impact, who applied, because I know a lot of, I know personally a lot of businesses that were attempting to, but if they didn't have a bank they could go through, it was hard. They had to be on the lists and yeah, so it was harder to actually get the money. So some are now getting them, but not all, everybody has. So it would be nice if we, if that is even available to see what the impact is and what it's going to be. And if there is a program out there that Tempe and other places are doing, it might be nice to look into. If we can help our small businesses out, if there's a way to do that, that'd be, that'd be good for everybody. So. And then I got a side question, but as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Vice Mayor Schiff.
You know, I think it's important to add to that from the Valley Metro Public Transit perspective. The changes to the system overall have been fairly minimal. Even with the reduction of the number of passengers per bus. If you, for example, the Zoom bus has been expanded to a much larger bus than the smaller one to allow for the social distancing to take place within the bus itself as well as the number of riders. And just for everyone's, you know, benefit and understanding that the ride choice services and the dial-a-ride services have not stopped. So that if you still need those and you need to get to the doctor and you were a participant in that, please know that the services are still available for you and that the public transit system is still operational and that we're taking every step possible to continue to see that. We've established, the executive committee has established benchmarks in which the system will start to expand times or get to that shutdown piece based on availability of drivers. But to date, we are very happy to report that we have not seen a reduction in drivers. So the system is holding up fairly well. And even though ridership is way down, the system is still operational. And I think it's important that if our residents need it, that they know that it's there.
Councilman Keno.
Well, in addition to the creative and unique ways that we've been serving the community during this time, I've especially appreciated your ongoing updates for us and keeping us in the loop. And that, that has made a big difference. Thinking about, you know, what we see on the news and things, the increased demand for services from nonprofits such as food banks and stuff. I don't know if there's a way to even find out from some of our local partners if they're seeing an increase from Goodyear residents utilizing their services. And let's see. I guess that was the only other thing that I was curious. Oh, one other thing, yes. I know that you had said that the economic development people are reaching out to Goodyear businesses and things like that, which is really good. I was just curious sort of the pulse of the community, if they are still optimistic or if they're starting to feel overwhelmed. Do you have any comments you could share?
I do. Thank you, Councilmember Keno. So as you mentioned, the economic development department has been reaching out to all Goodyear businesses across all industries to offer assistance, see how we can assist them during these challenging times, but also gathering information so we can see have they experienced any furloughs or layoffs or what is that industry experiencing. And it really is very dependent on the industry. There's been also some articles in the media. You know, when you talk about manufacturing and distribution, a lot of those industries have not been impacted. And in fact, some of them have even seen an increase in business and are hiring. When you look and look at our local restaurants and retailers, that is really where our businesses are struggling. And that's everything from the chain restaurants to the mom and pops. And so while Goodyear has a large percentage of our employment base that is not being impacted or harmed, we have a very significant segment which has been dramatically impacted. So it really depends on which business we're talking to. I know that the first round of the PP, PPE, I want to say PPE, which is personal protective equipment as compared to the payroll program. The first round, I think, was very tough. A lot of businesses could, their banks hadn't yet figured out how to process the applications. I think that there's been a lot of corrections made in now the second round of funding, including a portion of the money's been set aside just for smaller businesses so that the banks wouldn't be tempted to just go with their larger clients. So I'm hoping that we'll see a better success rate and our businesses will receive the assistance they need through the second program, which they did not see in the first program.
Yes, go ahead, Brandon.
I have a side question too. If Doug Ducey, if he says Phase 1, does Phase 1 include park amenities opening up?
I'm sorry, what is it?
Does park amenities, does Phase 1 include park amenities opening up?
So Phase 1, it depends. So we're actually working with Nathan on an entire spreadsheet based on the specific park amenity. So a Phase 1, if we can accomplish the cleaning and the social distancing, could include something like playgrounds, but it would not include something like a skate park because you cannot, you know, unless you had staff there limiting the access, you know, a skate park would probably open in Phase 2. But we're literally going through every program offered by Parks and Recs and saying, is this a program that we can open in Phase 1 because we want to? If we are able to, we want to open as much as we can. Or is it something that needs to wait till Phase 2? So that's the analysis that we've been working on daily in anticipation of the announcement that yay, Phase 1, we're ready to go. We are expecting in Phase 1, according to the president's plan, that you would see movie theaters and you would see restaurants and your retailers open again with the social distancing with less, you know, volume being served. Oh, I'm sorry, and gyms importantly would also be reopened in Phase 1 if they're again able to accomplish the cleaning and the social distancing.
Councilmember Laura Tannen.
To piggyback on that, how does, because of pools, because it's going to be 105 this week, how would that be, you know, it doesn't get any cooler as it goes on. How would that be in Phase 1? Because many of the pools here are like apartment complex pools. Those were all closed also. So do we know where that's going to fit in?
That's probably going to be a specific guidance we need from the governor. And we, as the city of Goodyear, we've actually submitted that question through the lead process because the CDC will tell you that the chlorine in pools makes pools safe. So they're not worried about contamination in a pool because of the chlorine. So if we were to look at opening the pool, we're having to consider things like perhaps you take a reservation hour by hour where there's no more than 10 people in the pool. You know, how do you then control the social distancing in the locker rooms or in restrooms? So those are, there's a lot of details, devil's always in the details. But I mean, just be assured that your team is working very hard to go through all of those situations and say, we know that, Council, we know that our community wants these amenities opened as quickly as possible. So we're going to get as creative as we can to make sure that we're opening it. But our top priority is also the health and safety of our community and our employees. And so we need to balance that.
And that's why I was wondering, because like some of the private pools were closed down for that. And like in Australia, we've got two pools, one is just a normal pool and then the other has the playground amenities. So I don't know how the chlorine keeps that clean. That's why I was just wondering like how that would affect all of our private pools. I know Pebble Creek and a lot of other ones have private pools, community pools.
Councilwoman Hampton, you got a second question?
I had a non-COVID question. If it is also requests, if it's also the time to do requests of the city manager as well. But all of it, you finished the COVID.
I'd say yes, but I also have a second presentation I was hoping to make.
Any other questions?
Okay, so let me make the second presentation and then we could do the.
That's your presentation? Do you want to continue it?
Yes. So this is the second presentation. So.
Okay, good.
Tonight is Rebecca Zook's last council meeting before she begins her new Texas adventure. So although due to the pandemic, she's not here in person, I'm assured she is watching. And we wanted to give her a proper send-off. And I want to say, as we prepare to say goodbye, I think of how lucky I am to have worked with someone that makes saying goodbye so difficult. Rebecca joined the Goodyear family in September of 2014. And during that time, her contributions to this organization, the development community, and the citizens have been tremendous. For the past five years, Rebecca helmed a department responsible for the infrastructure of the city's success and continued growth, impacting water, transportation, wastewater facilities, development, public safety, and so much more. She was integral to the success of our development continuum and management of a capital improvement program in excess of $250 million. Rebecca's successes are many. Projects in her repertoire include new and renovated city facilities such as the Goodyear Municipal Complex, our fire stations, and the Police Operations Building, managing the maintenance and installation of over 90 traffic signals citywide, miles upon miles of roadway, spring training complex renovations, new wells, and treatment plants. Most recently, she played an important role in our new recreation campus and Civic Square. Rebecca worked with employees, businesses, developers, and citizens, always with a mindset of breaking down barriers, sharing information, and coming to a successful result or resolution. She has been instrumental in resolving problems by forging an understanding between all parties. There's no doubt Rebecca has had an impressive career with the city. However, one of her lasting contributions will be the culture she created in the development continuum, a culture that broke down silos and brought new meaning to customer service. To Rebecca, work product was only one part of a successful equation. She diligently created an environment where each employee had a strong foundation to engage and grow. She modeled our core values and embraced lean. We'll remember your successes alongside your great sense of humor. You always took work seriously, but never took yourself too seriously. Not everyone can pull off a Stevie Nicks costume like you. I thank you for leaving a profound legacy and thank you for your service. You will be missed.
Thank you for that presentation. And if you want to add something, council members, just raise your hand and you can speak for just a moment. Councilmember Vice Mayor.
You know, when shortly after Rebecca got here, long before you got here, the, we had a presentation one night and I sent Rebecca an email and I'm hoping that she's listening, but really praising her for her honesty and her common sense approach to getting a lot of things done. And the way that she presented that particular night was very, it was at a time when we were not as trusting, or at least I wasn't, but I shouldn't speak for everybody, but about what we were getting from staff. There was a lot of just conflicting information and things that didn't make sense. And I had reached out to Rebecca and told her how much I appreciated her professionalism and the way that she approached things. And it made it much easier to trust what was being brought forward just by the way that she conducted herself. And I've never forgotten that, always supported, you know, Rebecca and took her at her word when she said, look, this doesn't mean we're going to do, just because we're doing A doesn't mean we're going to do B. I felt a lot of faith in that. So Rebecca, if you're out there, good luck in Texas. Not that you're going to need it, other than you're moving to Texas, no offense, but that's just Texas. Sorry, Wally. But in any event, best of luck to you and thank you for everything that you did for us in this city. And look forward to hearing, hearing about the great things you're going to do out in the wide expanse of the state of Texas. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Councilmember Laura Tannen.
We're going, I don't know if she's listening or not.
Guarantee she's listening.
We're going to miss you, Rebecca. I feel like I'm talking to this guy. Yeah, I mean, she was just fabulous. She was a great team player. If you had a question, she would get you the answer. I sat with her in a meeting where citizens brought questions about homes they were building. And she would sit there and she would have people go out to the site and she would sit there and explain it to the residents. I remember when I had questions about a traffic light up at the Star Point, she went to McDonald's and sat there for the afternoon and literally watched the traffic, not just the traffic count, she watched the patterns. And she is so dedicated and we are going to miss her. And we wish you the best of luck in Texas and you will just rock Texas because she was a cool engineer. So thank you wherever you are.
Councilmember Hampton.
Yeah, also, I mean, a lot of echoing, but yeah, I did appreciate her professionalism and her work ethic. And yeah, I think we hire really great people here. It's hard to lose people that do a great job for us. And she definitely leaves a mark on our city as she goes on to other locations here within the country. But yeah, thank you so much for, to you, Rebecca, wherever you are, wherever you might be. But yeah, thank you so much for everything you have done for our city because I know the city has been better for it. So thank you.
Councilor Keno.
Rebecca, I just want to say thank you for your contributions. Thank you for setting up Goodyear for a good future and we wish you the very best.
Councilmember Hampton.
Well, Rebecca is certainly a woman of integrity and she raised our city to a much higher level than we were in the development community because she came at a time when we needed to have strong leadership and she provided that for us. And I will be eternally grateful to her for her help in resolving some of the issues with the various homeowner associations throughout the city. And I have never received so many letters complimenting staff, complimenting Rebecca on her service to other residents when they call, her courtesy, her kindness, and she is deeply going to be missed, but we wish her the very best. Prosper is getting a wonderful employee and we just wish you the best, Rebecca. Thank you for all you've done for Goodyear and we'll never forget you.
Councilmember Vazillo.
I have nothing more to add.
You already said it. You have, I can't believe you have nothing to say. Don't believe him, Rebecca. He's probably going to get you the next time he sees you. Any other, I'm, it, can I say I didn't want her to go? I kept after her and once she got the extension, I cheered. Of course, she didn't. She wants to be with her family and we all understand that. The engineering department was not what it is today. The conflict it created among some of our neighborhoods, they weren't good at analyzing and they weren't progressive. And she changed all of that. And I know each and one of you have asked a question during one of our council meetings and she's come forth and handled it beautifully. Her demeanor, her approach, her presentations, unbelievable. I have never seen anyone like her in that field that was capable of reaching everybody, not just the council members, the citizens and the other staff. And our city manager's been very lucky. And she's going to leave a trail because there have been a great number of changes and I don't think those will go away. So whomever the next person's coming in, I think the structure's there. I think the coordination of the staff in that department is there. And I think she put everybody on their, on their right track. So Rebecca, have a great time. I know that you've been waiting for this for a long, long time. We shall miss you. And if your husband decides to come on back, don't forget us. If there's a position available, we'll rehire you. Have a great, great life. And where are we now?
Brandon had a question.
Yeah.
Is this also, is this also the time to make requests? Request of staff, request of staff, request of staff right now?
Yes.
Yeah, so I just wanted to, I tried to make it on the app, but I did see a bunch of, there's a lot of weeds right now throughout the community. And I know specifically, at least on the Cotton Lane, Cotton Lane Bridge and up and down Cotton from the Cotton Lane Bridge up to Lilac roughly. But I'm sure there's more places in the community. I just noticed when I was jogging near the bridge that there were a lot more weeds there than normal. So.
Thank you.
Just a high level. Yeah, I'm sure there's more places out there and I'm sure staff's all over it. That's just the place that I had noticed because it was hard to get through there. So thank you.
Any other questions? All right. The next meeting will be a work session. Oh, we got to get, yes.
That's what I thought we were doing.
Kind of do.
Okay. Rorick is back, okay. Would you just repeat for the public what?
Yes, the two questions that Councilmember Laura Tannen asked were, one, whether Clear Channel was selling an interest to a Chinese company. And the second was whether they received any CARES funding. I'd already received an email by the time I stepped back into the conference room, but I did call Ms. Ferras anyway to confirm her answers. They are not eligible and have not received any CARES funding. And they do have an international division that is selling a subsidiary that is a Chinese company. So it's a Chinese subsidiary that is owned by the international division of Clear Channel. So Clear Channel will, even though they are selling that subsidiary, they will remain a fully-owned U.S. company.
Any comments from council from that report?
I still, my position is still that when we have our small businesses here, I just don't believe in the corporate welfare in this period. They're still a publicly traded corporation and I just don't see how our three months that could be something that our citizens need. That's just, I'm just not going to support it, but I understand. So thank you.
So we still have to have a vote on this. So any other council discussion? Councilmember Vazillo.
It's my understanding we're getting something for something. So we're not really giving up. Yeah, we're cutting them some slack for the three months, but we're also getting what, 14 days worth of advertising? So I don't see it, in my perspective, I don't see it as corporate welfare. I see it now as giving my hand, but at the same token, we're getting something out of it to having more access to the advertisement. So I'll be supporting it.
Any other discussion? Vice Mayor.
Rorick, can you review again the, not the, not 14 days, but what does that really mean for us? Because I'm, I am absolutely, which is rare, on the fence. Do you ever know me not to be, not to have landed somewhere?
No.
So there's changes in terminology between the original agreement and the amendment. And that is to bring our usage and our allowable usage on the billboards into alignment with how they currently are programming the billboards. So yes, there is a change in how much time we would get on the billboards. So if you take it and compare it apples to apples, and it is confusing. And I sat and I had them walk me through the charts on how this translates. But roughly, if you look at the current agreement, we would get the equivalent of 10 days advertising guaranteed and then an additional 10 days advertising. and then an additional 10 days advertising on a space-available basis. Under the amended agreement, we would get 14 days and 14 days, so an increase on a monthly basis of four days.
So we're getting, yeah, four additional.
Yes.
Days of time. Have, do we have any idea, any sense of how much of that we've been taking advantage of? Like, have we been, we've been taking advantage of our 10 days already?
Absolutely. So on, if I could, on, on the I-10, you'll see we have right now the banner of "We Are Resilient" that will come up on those billboards. So Tammy takes whatever we're currently pushing out on social media, she'll format it so it can also be used as part of that billboard. So Tammy, I think previously, probably not. Since Tammy's been here, she's been very aggressively using that, that time.
Okay, so, yeah, we'll pick up additional. Do you know, are we picking up additional time with new material, or is it just additional time of the same stuff? Do we have any sense of how that is going to look?
My understanding, it's whatever we want to run during that period of time. So if we wanted to have one message, say, a census message for a week solid, we control what that message will be. So it's, it's purely up to us as to how we program that time.
So I think what I'm, what I'm trying to get to is, are we, do we have something in mind for that, for those extra four days? Do you have any sense of that? I know it's hard for you to answer because you're not Tammy.
Yeah, I think, I think truly it's just additional exposure.
Okay.
That from our, you know, as far as our communication with our residents, that we will take advantage of any opportunity we have to do so.
Okay. And that goes on forever, correct?
Yes, that'll, that'll continue through the entirety of the agreement the next 17 years.
Okay. That is the only thing that's pushing me to the, to Joe's side of, yeah.
Councilwoman Pizzillo.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but because, again, the gift clause, if we were going to cut a deal with them, we've got to get something in value comparable to what we're giving up. Otherwise, we'd be in violation. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, and that's why the agreement was drafted and presented in the way it was.
Any other comments? Then I think we need a roll call on this one, okay? Vice Mayor Steph.
Aye.
Councilmember Keno.
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tannen.
No.
Councilmember Campbell.
No.
Councilmember Hampton.
Aye.
Mayor Lord.
Aye.
The motion carries. So what was the vote?
Five to two.
It was five to two. Five to two, thank you. All right, the next meeting will be a work session on May 4th, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. No further business. This meeting's adjourned.